Can everybody see the test question? It's not fun to talk with a screen. Okay? Okay, are we ready to vote? The voting has started. Vote now. The voting has ended. The light is out, it was off. Here are the results. It failed. Thank you. Okay, Article 2, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 2. I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article 3 of the May 4th, 2021 annual town meeting as follows. Increase line item 015411-511295 program coordinator from $6,300 to $20,767.50. Increase line item 011992-5740 insurance and bonds from $880,000 to $905,000. Increase line item 011992-5480 gas, oil, diesel from $190,000 to $215,000. Increase line item 014112-5800 road reconstruction from $435,000 to $485,000. And further to approve an amended fiscal year 2022 budget for the town of Auburn
Thank you, is there a second? There is a second. Mr. Kevin Obridge.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you. Okay. So I have a brief presentation that I want to show our town meeting members tonight. Basically bridging the final conclusion of the May 2nd annual town meeting and what we are requesting tonight and where that puts us financially. So as you can see at the conclusion of the May 2nd, the first column under FY22, we came to you with a balanced budget, about a $9,200 discrepancy, the final action of town meeting. And we are requesting before you tonight through the warrant additional appropriations of $1,443,298.50, of which $750,000 of that is being asked to be appropriated from our recently certified free cash amount. And I'll get into the details of each one of these components. But as you boil this down, you look at total appropriations of 1.4, offset by total revenue sources of $1,452,498.50. If you, if town meeting were to approve the warrant articles as presented, we would have a balanced budget. Getting into the revenue components, the tax levy amount above and beyond what we estimated at the annual town meeting is an additional $84,251.77 being asked to be appropriated out of tax levy. As you can see, that is a, actually, that's a reduction of 84. It's just under, roughly under 1% of the total levy that we're asking to be taxed. Our new growth came in higher than estimated. We estimated $450,000. The actual amount certified by DOR is $767,781. So that's the bulk of the increase that's leading to reductions in the level of taxation. Our local receipts, based upon the actuals through June 30th, we were able to revise that. We are taking $344,685.27 more than we projected at the annual town meeting. And as you can see in the far right-hand column, the differences in estimates are identified in the bold print. We do have some concerns also. We received more in motor vehicle excise. Inventory is low as a result of market conditions. There are chips that are not being supplied to the manufacturers and sales have become stagnant. So we went conservative on that thinking that this may last a while and sales may be significantly lower than last year. When we look at our available funds, as you can see, the bulk of our additional available funds is in our second line item down under free cash, $750,000. There is a warrant article requesting $300,000 for the purchase of an ambulance. That's coming out of ambulance receipts. So a small amount of, when you add those two, that's $1,050,000 minus the 1.4. It's about $300,000 something that's being requested to be funded through other various revenue sources such as tax levy and available funds and local receipts. Here are the appropriations that are before you tonight. It totals $1,443,298.50. Although the last two on this page, state cherry sheet charges and receipts, it's not a direct appropriation that we're asking you to approve. This is an appropriation based upon the state cherry sheet assessments that we have to appropriate. So it's an offset. We recorded on the tax recap sheet. That total is just about $38,000. When we look at the status of our excess levy, we estimated that to be just over $7.5 million. Because we're taxing less than we anticipated back in May, we were taxing at a rate of 1.97% out of 2.5. We managed to reduce that down to 1.15, leading in a reduction of the level of taxation by $402,032.77, or just under 1% reduction out of Prop 2.5. In summary, when we look at the recap on our revenue and expenses, we have total revenue sources equal to appropriations of $74,226,579.31. It is a balanced budget. Once again, the level of taxation based upon your action tonight would result in taxing at 1.15 out of a possible 2.5. When you look at that as a percentage of 2.5, it's less than half, about 46.10. And our excess levy estimate would be $7,903,476. So, Mr. Moderator, that's a summary of where we at today, what we're asking town meeting to do tonight, and what the results would be as a result of approval of those warrant articles.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not seeing any. We are ready to vote. Green light goes on. It's on. Vote now. The light is off. The vote is 66 in favor, 3 against, and 1 abstention. That was a majority vote, so the article passes. Article 3, Mr. Baker.
I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article 13 of the May 4th, 2021 annual town meeting so as to reduce the Medicaid reimbursement from $150,000 to $100,000. This article funds supplies in medical, therapeutic, and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students as well as tuition and transportation to and from outside placements or within the district for special needs students.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? Then we're ready for the vote. The light is on. Voting period has begun. The light has gone off. The voting period has ended. The vote is 68 in favor, 3 against, and 2 abstentions. The vote is, it passes. That was a majority. Question 4 is also a majority. Mr. Baker.
I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article 15 for the McKinney Vendo receipt within the general fund revenues from the estimated $5,000 approved in Article 15 of the May 4th, 2021 annual town meeting to $13,750, which was the actual amount received to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2022 in order to fund transportation for students to and from school who have become homeless during the fiscal year.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? Then we're ready for the, light is on. The vote has started. The light is off. Voting has stopped. The article passes, 71 in favor, 1 against, and no abstentions this time. Article 4. 5, excuse me.
Thank you, 5. Article 5. I move that the town meeting vote to postpone this article indefinitely.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any? Then we're ready for the vote. The light is on. Please vote. The light is out. Voting has ended. The vote is in favor. It was a majority vote because the article changed. 66 in favor, 3 against, and 4 abstentions. Article 6, Mr. Baker.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $50,000 from general fund revenues for a new deputy chief vehicle.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? Then the voting period begins when the light is on, and it's on now. The light is off. The voting period has ended. This is a majority vote. 59 in favor, 11 against, and 2 abstentions. Article 7 is a 2/3rds vote. Mr. Baker.
I move that the town meeting vote to repurpose CTP funds by amending Article 4 of the June 2nd, 2020 annual town meeting as follows. Authorize the balance of funds in the amount of $5,529.20 to be used for the purchase of a new deputy chief vehicle.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any? Then we are ready to vote, and the light is on. This is a 2/3rds vote once again. The light is out. The vote has stopped. 63 in favor, 9 against, 1 abstention. The vote passes. It is 2/3rds. No, it's only majority, excuse me. Number 9. Mr. Baker, Article 9.
I think, I'm sorry, I think out of the way.
See?
8.
Article 8. Then Article 8.
I move, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $300,000 from available funds-am ambulance receipts for the purchase of a new ambulance.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? Then the voting period will start now. The light is on. The light is out. Voting has stopped. This is majority, 69 in favor, 2 against, 1 abstention. Now Article 9. Mr. Baker.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $41,000 from general fund revenues to address the HVAC system and air quality and asbestos removal at Station 2.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? Then we will get ready to vote when the light comes on. The light is on. The light is off. Yes, 69, no, 2, and no abstentions this time. Article 10 is a 2/3rds article.
I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article number 4 of the May 1st, 2018 annual town meeting by repurposing under the planning division line item health on, dash, health online permitting module in the amount of $20,000 to mapping organization project.
Is there a second? Are there any questions? Not seeing any? Then I guess the voting period will begin when the light goes on. The light is on. The light is off. The article has passed.
Article 11. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $3,000 from general fund revenues for the creation of an incipient, an incident response plan for the town of Auburn.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? Then when the light goes on, we can vote right now? The light is on. It was majority vote. It passes. Article 12, Mr. Baker.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $42,000 from general fund revenues for the purchase of new security cameras for the town of Auburn.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Come to the microphone, sir. Give your name and what precinct, please.
Yes, Russell Towlesman, Precinct 2. I just like, cameras are going to be located or used?
Michael Moreno, the IT Director. We already have cameras throughout the town in our buildings, our municipal buildings. These cameras are just replacing the existing ones. The ones that we have now, they're about 10 years old. They're not high def or anything like that. They're old quality, so we just want to replace those with some newer ones.
Anybody else? Then I guess we're ready for the vote. Okay, the light is on. Please vote. The voting period has ended. The article passes. Article 13.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $65,000 from the Packard Child Golf Course retained earnings to replace the fairway mower.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Danny Largess, Precinct 4. This is all coming out of their budget, correct? And does the old mower get sold off at auction or repurposed? What's going to happen with that?
The DPW will answer that for you, I hope. I'm trying.
Joanna Taquen, DPW Director. Yes, it does, kind of, the golf course budget. And the, the the old mower is going to be, going to be traded in. So that, that amount of money is going to be, reflects the trade-in value that we get.
Thank you. Any, anybody else have a question? Okay, we're onto Article. Oh, we got to vote on this one. As soon as the light goes on, it's on, please vote. The light is, the light is off. Voting period has ended. Article passes. It was majority. Article 15.
14.
14, excuse me.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $20,000 from the Packard Child Golf Course retained earnings to replace the roof at the golf course clubhouse.
Second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any? Mr. Frost.
Ken Frost, Precinct 4. How much money is in the retained earnings at the Packard Child Golf Course?
Mr. Fr-
Mr. Frost, the certification by DOF for period ending 6/30/21 fiscal 2021 was $359,227.
Are there any other questions? Not seeing any? The light is on. Please vote. The light is off. The vote is in. The vote passes unanimously. Article 15.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $20,000 from general fund revenues for the replacement of three hopper spreaders for salt application with one ton, with one ton dump trucks.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? Then we're ready for the vote. The light is on. Please vote. The light is out. The vote is in. The vote is in. It passes. Article 16.
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $40,500 from overlay surplus for personal property revaluation and for additional training support of software service companies.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not, not seeing any? Then when the light goes on, please vote. Voting has begun. The light is out. It passes. The vote, numbers, 16 passes. Article 17. Article 17, right. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $250,000 from free cash to the Town Stabilization Fund. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions?
Russell Towlesman, Precinct 4. I'm just a little confused as to what you mean by Town Stabilization Fund? Where's that money going to go? That's a lot of money. What's it going to be used for? What's it going to be used for?
So, so Mr. Talisman, this is an account that is legally established under DOR guidelines that allows for money to be set aside for future years, basically unforeseen expenditures that may result, that may result at any given time. This money, we have about, I believe, I'm just researching my, my balances here, forgive me one second.
Anybody else have a question?
So the stabilization account has roughly 3.668 million in it. So these are one of the reserves that the rating agencies like to see increased over a period of time. It just gives the town a future financial, financial flexibilities if it needs to purchase a fire truck, if it needs to purchase any land. That money would become available without the town securing bonds to fund those type of acquisitions. It also requires to spend money out of that account, it requires a vote of town meeting with a two-thirds vote.
Any other questions? Not seeing any? We're ready for the vote, the light is on. The light is now out. It passes. Article 18.
19. Okay, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $500,000 from free cash to the Town OPEDD, Other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trustee.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions on that? Not seeing any, then the voting period has begun. Voting on Article 18 has ended. That passes. Article 19.
I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant a permanent, non-exclusive easement to 190 Washington Street Auburn LLC, or its, or its designees, for consideration of $200 as printed in the October 26, 2021 special town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions?
Kathy Stone, Precinct 4. I don't understand why he read the first half of one article and the last half of the second article. I didn't bring my paperwork with me, but it seems to me he, oh yeah, but that's not what he just read. He read the first half of one paragraph on the warrant, the two-page warrant that we get, and the second half of the next one, which stated specific dates and so forth.
Through the moderator, I believe the motion was read as a motion not to read the entire article. And that was the motion that was prepared.
Okay, then I misunderstood something.
Yeah, it wasn't reading the entire article, it's reading the motion to pass the article.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Anybody else have a question? Not seeing any? When the light goes on, we'll vote. The voting period has ended. The vote has passed. Article 20, by the way, is two-thirds, just wanted to tell you that right now. Article 20, Mr. Baker.
I move that the town meeting vote to amend Section 3.9.1.4 of the Accessory Use Regulations and to add Section 14 of the Auburn Zoning Bylaw as printed in the October 26, 2021 special town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? We have a second. Are there any questions on number, on question, Article 20? There are questions.
Nancy Bemis, Precinct 5. I just have a question on the backyard poultry. It says a permit is required to be obtained from the Board of Health, and I wonder why that's necessary? If you want to have a few chickens in your backyard, why do you need a permit?
Adam? Mr. Manad? No, excuse me. This is Cole, I think.
Hi, good evening. Darlene Coyle, DDIS Director. So my understanding is you're asking about a permit for the poultry? Yeah. So that, that requirement is actually the same as what it is now. The purpose of the bylaw is to actually try to allow people to have a backyard poultry and being able to put some framework for the structure for how people can do it. So currently, it is something that we do have in the current regulation, but this, for the bylaw, what we're trying to do is give residents a framework for backyard poultry because it has become so popular in recent years. We also do get a lot of calls and concerns where people do have chickens, maybe in tight neighborhoods, that may cause, may cause some concerns for our office to respond to. So that's why we have proposed the bylaw and, you know, some of the restrictions on how to tackle them.
Thank you, Mrs. Coyle. Anybody else have a question? Come to the mic.
Don Letson, Precinct 1. Is it possible for residents to receive exemptions from the guidance that is laid out in this article? I'm asking particularly about Section 14, 4, and 14, 5, and I'm thinking about folks who already have beehives or chickens who may or may not be grandfathered in based upon what's, what's defined here.
Mrs. Coyle's coming back.
So in regards to 14, 5, you're talking about the beehives and then the poultry for 14, 4 and 14, 5?
We happen to have chickens and bees.
Sure. So part of the reason that we have this is we have had, we know that beekeeping has become very popular in recent years, and we didn't have any, anything that had a framework for beekeeping. So these proposed bylaw rules are taken actually from the Massachusetts Association of Beekeepers, some of their best practices. So we wanted to kind of be in sync with what the state has. We are not requiring a permit, we just basically want to have a registration of where the, the hives are in town. We have had some calls to our office regarding bees, and typically those are where there's some concerns, where people may have beehives kind of right on the property line. So we were trying to, again, give some sort of leeway to people to have kind of a set of rules to follow. So again, it's a registration through the Board of Health, it's not a permit, but they're really best practices laid out by the state.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have any more questions? Yes, Mr. Larges, I believe.
What about grandfathered in for people who do have livestock and other animals? I see a couple of these things that kind of look a little confusing.
Hi, thank you for the question. Amy Contois, the Animal Control Officer in town. So I do want to explain that right now, our zoning bylaws don't have much information to address livestock. So right now, 3.9.1.4 allows for four adult animals per property, so that includes dogs, cats, and other pets. It doesn't strictly define what other pets are. The proposals that we have in front of you do add definitions to what other pets would be considered, so household pets. So that's where that limit, the number limit would come from. And then further, the current zoning bylaws only allow livestock on properties greater than five acres. So the proposals that we're making would actually allow livestock on smaller properties. It would allow livestock on properties as small as one acre to five acres with less restrictions on larger properties over five acres. In certain circumstances, it would require a special permit, depending on the lot size. You know, there would be a review process if somebody, you know, currently has livestock that might not be consistent with our current zoning bylaws, and they want to keep their livestock. And again, they might not be in compliance with the new proposed changes that we're making, but it could go through a review process through the ZDA, Zoning Board of Appeals.
We have more questions, sir?
Russell Talisman, Precinct 2. I just want to get a clarification on the definition of livestock, if that considers chickens and roosters. I live on Oxford Street, small lot, small neighborhood, and the people in my backyard, they've got roosters and chickens and, you know, I love the animals, but the summer months when the windows open, all you can hear is, you know, it drives you kind of crazy, and just wondering, where's the old galloons?
Thank you. So our office, so Animal Control and the Board of Health does currently respond to complaints regarding roosters in town. So right now, all we have is a Board of Health regulation that roosters are not allowed in town without a permit from the Board of Health. Currently, the Board of Health hasn't issued any permits to residents in town to allow for roosters. So right now, the zoning bylaws that we're proposing are consistent with that. No roosters would be allowed on properties less than five acres. So a property with more than five acres would be more of a farming property and not in residential neighborhoods like Oxford Street North. It would also set limits to having poultry on smaller properties. So on a property less than 10,000 square feet, we wouldn't be allowing any poultry. And then the first section of the proposal, it does set definitions for livestock and poultry separately. So livestock would include larger animals like cattle, goats, sheep, pigs, horses, those types of animals. Poultry would include chickens, turkeys, geese, ducks, guinea hens, and smaller, smaller game birds.
Thank you, Mrs. Coyle. Mr. Dufoy, did you have a question?
I do, thank you. Tom Dufoy, Precinct 5. So what, I guess, is there any acreage restriction currently regarding keeping of livestock or poultry, of anything like that?
Mrs. Coyle?
Amy Contois, Animal Control Officer. Thank you. So right now, the only place that that is addressed in our zoning bylaws is in the Table of Principal Uses, 3.2.1.3. So that says that commercial poultry or livestock farm raising of pets for gainful purposes is allowed in all zoning districts, but the regional mall district and Drury Square Village, provided the lot is greater than five acres. So currently, keeping of any livestock or poultry technically would not be allowed under, on a property less than five acres. But again, going back to 3.9.1.4, where it lists four adult animals per property, dogs, cats, other pets. Nothing is very strongly defined in the current zoning bylaws, so we're trying to clarify all of that to let residents know what exactly is allowable on their property.
Just, just a quick thought, so the current bylaws are that it's only if it's over five acres?
Technically, for commercial poultry or livestock farming and keeping or raising pets for gainful purposes, that's in one section, but in another section, it has cats, dogs, and other pets. So the other pets is loosely defined, or not defined. So if someone says they have their pet chicken, that's where we're running into problems and why we're looking to clarify this.
Right, so would somebody raising just chickens for their own use, would that be considered commercial?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any, then we'll wait. Oh, oh, there's one more question, I see, somebody's hand up. Yes, sir.
Tom Conver, Precinct 4. Just a point of clarification with the household pet definition. So out of the pets that are now listed in this definition, how, how are they being monitored? And do we care that people have fish in their house?
Thank you for that. So again, we do already have the zoning bylaw that limits the number of animals per household. Again, it says cats, dogs, other pets. So this is making it more clear of what we're defining, that other pets, that they're pets kept in the household, they're not chickens outside, goats in your backyard. So we do have to give examples of what that is, and most of the time, we're responding to complaints. So complaints of maybe animal hoarding at a property, animal smells coming from a property. So typically, that's when we get involved and then are possibly becoming aware of the number of animals at said property. In that section that you see, it is also addressing kind of licensing for dogs, which is separate. So that is something that a kind of license, so if somebody, if a resident wants more than four dogs, that requires a separate license, that's consistent with current Mass general law, and that requires an inspection of your property annually. So there are some instances where we are checking to see the number of animals, but typically, we're not knocking on a door to count your fish.
Thank you. Another question, yes, sir, in the middle.
Hi, David Salt, Precinct 2. I just have two questions. One, I've heard a few people ask about grant- Hi, David Salt, precinct two. I just have two questions. One, I've heard a few people ask about grandfathering in, and I haven't heard an answer to that yet. The other one is, is I need a little bit more clarification on the last answer. I don't understand the logic behind actually calling out fish, for instance. Six fish in a fish tank, because it seems to be something the town would be concerned with. But yet, it's actually called out here specifically. So clarification, if you could.
Thank you. So part of the, when we were looking at creating these changes, we looked to the state to see what type of definitions they had at the state level. And in working with Ms. Contois, trying to really kind of clarify the difference between a household pet versus livestock. And that was important because, as she has explained, we really didn't have any definition of that in the previous bylaw. And we have had, over the years since I've been here, so many challenges with that and not having that definition. So correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, but I believe this definition is from the state. So we rely heavily on some of the state information. So hopefully, that addresses your, your fish question.
I probably have a follow-up or two there, but again, I, I, I just, I don't want to put too fine a point on it. And I don't want to belabor this and make everybody stay late, but it just seems sort of odd that we have hundreds of school kids with fish tanks that we're going to legally be in violation of what we're proposing here.
Right. So I, I certainly can appreciate, you know, your comment. If you can think of it in a context of not as innocent as maybe a fish tank, but us receiving a call for, say, somebody doing business with reptiles and having
Please let us understand. I don't disagree with your entire proposal at all. It just seems that it was called out for a reason, and I wanted to see if it was, if there was this concern. And if there was, if you could explain. I think I understand. I just want to understand, folks who have more than, I think it was four dogs or four cats now, are they going to be in violation if this passes?
So actually, we made the change. Under the three nine one four, we actually have changed that to, instead of just four animals is what was in the previous bylaw, this actually identifies six household pets. So it actually gives more leeway to the residents. And, and that's part of, you know, putting some structure into place. We wanted to be able to be mindful that people may already have that many animals. So let's, you know, try to
I misread them. That's my bad. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Does that answer all your questions?
Anybody? Okay, Mr. Elijah, make a shot, please.
So a question I have, again, is are these new regulations going to be in compliance with, like, Massachusetts Farm Bureau in the state of Massachusetts, or are they going to be different?
Thank you. So the state does have some laws for farming, specifically like right-to-farm towns. Auburn is not a right-to-farm town, but even so, this would be consistent with that. We're not disallowing farming on a farming-sized property. So right-to-farm is still targeted towards properties of greater than five acres that are using their farming for financial gain and purposes, so commercial farming. Not people that want pet livestock and agricultural animals on their property. That right-to-farm bylaw that, again, Auburn has not voted to accept in this town, so we're not right-to-farm, does allow for farming on smaller properties. But again, owners would, owners of the property need to make a certain percentage of financial gain from those smaller properties, too. So we're not disallowing anybody from making a profit on their property if that's what they're looking to do through agriculture.
Thank you. Nobody else had their hand up? Oh, way in the back, yeah, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Gwen White, precinct three. Fourteen point four four, beehives may be subject to inspections by Animal Control and/or Animal Inspector and/or Board of Health agent. Under what circumstances would you be coming in and inspecting? And are you qualified to disturb a beehive? And would you come when I'm not home, or?
Thank you for the question. So we are aware of, you know, regulations through the CMRs for beehives. However, we're not coming in to inspect the health of a beehive. That zoning bylaw was put in place for town officials to be able to respond to complaints. So we have received complaints in the past about concerns from residents of neighbors keeping their beehives close to property lines. So concern for their safety of possibly an excess of bees on their property. So we're, again, we're not looking to inspect the health integrity or condition of the physical hive. It would be to be able to respond to complaints. The state does have a program where beekeepers can request health inspections for their bees from the state inspectors. So we would lean towards the state inspectors that have the qualifications and the training to do those types of inspections.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Mr. Dufour?
Mr. Stensel, Tom Dufour, precinct five. I make a motion to delete the word fish from section fourteen point one of Article twenty in the October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one warrant and replace the word lizard in its place. You can, you can
Tom, bring that up here, please.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Okay. There was a second on that, by the way, yes. By the town clerk. Anybody else have a question? We're working on the amendment now, nothing to do with the main motion. Excuse me? This is on the amendment first.
Jason Hubert, precinct three. Question on the amendment is, they want to answer the question, but I have to say it, so.
No.
No? Doesn't work that way?
He made an amendment that we have
The question is, he wants
The main question, the main question is off of the floor for the time being. We have to do something with Mr. Dufour's amendment.
Okay.
We can accept it or reject it.
Gotcha.
Once we're finished with Mr. Dufour's amendment, then we'll go back to the main question. Mr. Baker?
Yes, move the question on.
Mr. Baker moved the question. It's non-debatable. We're moving the amendment.
Point of order, don't we have to vote on the motion to move?
Oh, yeah, we are.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure, okay? All those in favor of moving the amendment, please do it on your notepad when the light comes on. Hold it. So we gotta get a screen up there. Mr. Moderator, the votes in favor or against? Why don't you put up? On the amendment. This is to move the amendment. It's a majority, if that's what you're asking. Okay, we have it up on the board now. So now we can vote. The light is on. Please vote. Oh. Okay, vote right now. The vote was on, moving the question, yeah. Okay. Moving the question has passed. Now we're on the amendment. Mr. Dufour's amendment. Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, we need the light on.
No, we didn't start yet. We have to get a slide to be extra.
Yes, we have to get it up on the board.
Because it is amended, we have to add a slide.
Then we have to do something to get it on the board? Yeah, okay. Now you can vote. Replace the word with lizard. Okay, the vote is in. Thirty-six in favor, twenty-seven opposed. That, that was for the amendment, which is right here. And it's, uh, replace, delete the word fish from section and add the word lizard in its place. That's the amendment that we just voted on.
Point of order, did the amendment need a two-thirds vote because it's a zoning question? Did the amendment only need a simple majority?
Simple majority. Just needs a majority. The amendment.
Because it's still a two-thirds question.
We voted on the amendment. The next vote we have is on the, hopefully, is on the original article, which will be a two-thirds. Yes?
Amy Margret Castellano, precinct one. I would like to amend the amendment to strike the word lizard and replace with reptile.
Okay, with many amendment, to strike the word lizard and replace it with the word reptile. Any questions? Is there a, was there a second on that? There was a time he seconded it. Challenge? Yes, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, move the question on. We haven't had any discussion on question.
There was a move to question before all, before the start. No. Are you moving the question now, Mr. Baker?
I am, Mr. Moderator.
Is there a second on Mr. Baker's amendment? Is there a move in the question? So the first part of a business is to remove this amendment, which says amend the agreement, amend the amendment to strike the word lizard and replace it with the word reptile. All those in favor of moving this? Can we vote? Can we vote? As soon as the screen comes up. Okay, go ahead and vote. Voting has ended. We are moving it, this amendment. We're back to the original on the original question as it's been amended. We're voting on deleting the reptile, excuse me, now hold it. Deleting the lizard and replacing it with the reptile. Okay. All those in favor of that, please raise your hand, please vote now. No, that was moving the motion, the amendment. Voting has ended. The reptile is now in the picture. Now we vote back to now we go back to Article twenty, to vote on Article twenty. Unless somebody has a question. Somebody have a Mr. Baker?
I move the amended article.
There's been a move, amendment, move the amendment article.
Well, I'm sorry.
I thought we already moved it. You mean the whole article?
I vote we come out today and move the amendment.
And it's been seconded. Okay, we're voting. I thought we voted to move the article.
We need to vote on twenty, but that one's not But we have to vote on our votes and to move the question before we can vote on the question. The next time we quickly announce
We're gonna vote on moving, moving? Okay, okay, ready. Go ahead and And we're voting on ending the debate, period. We're done. We have moved the, Mr. Baker's motion has gone through. Now we're back to Article twenty. As it has been amended. We're ready to vote. In a second. This is a two-thirds vote, yes. Okay, yeah, start voting. Voting period is over. The motion, I mean, excuse me, the article has failed, didn't get a two-thirds vote. Seventy-five people, seventy? Seventy-three people voted. Okay? Now we'll go on with number, question. Number 21. Article 21, Mr. Baker?
I move that the town meeting vote to amend section 3.2 and 3.3, table of uses and description of uses of the Auburn zoning bylaw as printed in the October 26, 2021 special town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? There's a second. Any questions? Not seeing any hands up? I guess we're ready to vote. When the light is on, please vote. This is a two-thirds vote. The light is off, voting has ended. It? It, it passed. Article 21. Twenty-two, Mr. Baker?
I move at the town meeting, by a majority voting threshold, vote to amend section 5.4 dimensional regulations of the Auburn zoning bylaw as printed in the October 26, 2021 special town meeting warrant.
Is there a second on Article 22? Is there a second? Are there any questions? Over to the left, Mrs. Ethia, is it? Am I sure?
Ellen Ethia, Precinct 5, on the back page of this table here, it talks about changing the heights from 25 to 80 or an up to 110 with special permit, and then 35 to 80 or an up to 110 feet with special permit. Does that mean we need to have new fire apparatus to get that high up?
Mr. Menad? Oh? Fire chief is coming down.
Good evening, Steve Coleman, Fire Chief. Uh, no, it does not. Uh, the fire apparatus that we have specifically are ladder truck. Aerial trucks are designed for reach, not height. We never operate our 95-foot ladder in the vertical. The ladder trucks are used for reach. So the short answer is no, it would not require any new fire apparatus.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Not seeing any, this is the majority vote now. Well? So I just.
I don't, Danny Lagers, Precinct 4, I don't know if all you town meeting members had a chance to come down and look at these photos, uh, drawings here. It was very informational before the meeting, but, um, I don't know if you want a 90-foot building on Southbridge Street next to, uh, across from Papagino's or, um, I don't think the town's ready for this. And like I, I said earlier, we shrunk the size of Auburn Street to go to small-town USA, and now you're looking at a 90-foot building right on Southbridge Street, less than a half mile from where we just shrunk the street. I, I, I'm kinda confused at where the town's going. Do we wanna go bigger? Or do we wanna go smaller? I'm, I'm kinda lost.
No? Anybody here want to answer that?
There was no question. Well, I'll be trying to go bigger with the ballot, or be trying to go small.
Mr. Menad?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not really sure what the direction, you know, the question is trying to get at smaller or larger. The tall building would only fit out of certain size parcel. Most of the parcels along Southbridge Street really would fit a 90-foot building. There are very few parcels in town, um, that would be able to support that top, that height of building, most along with 20, um, Millbury Street, maybe a couple on, um, Southbridge Street. But a tall building like that would still need to fit all the other bylaws in town. They have to meet parking regulations, setback regulations, um, landscaping and lighting. You couldn't just put a large building like that without any setbacks, without any screening, without any deference to the neighbors, so, um, I'm not sure if that answers your question, Dan, but, um...
The other thing is, if we, we start doing buildings of this size, how is the infrastructure of the town of Auburn gonna handle the amount of sewage and water use of a building this size? I mean, you're talking nine stories, and I had asked you the question earlier, if something like this could be put on the Auburn Mall site, and you said yes. I don't know if I wanna come out of Shaw's and look at a, a nine-story building 600 feet long. I mean, this is, this is kinda crazy. I think the town's going in the wrong direction.
I'm, I'm not sure of any building that's 600 feet long, that would be nine stories. But again, they'd have to meet all the other requirements. Part of what this bylaw says, they can't take up more than 50% of a parcel size. Would also have to meet certain setbacks as a step, um, language in that if they go up five feet, uh, three feet, they have to be stepped five feet away from the, the parcel boundary. So we're not trying to have buildings that take up the entire parcel size. They must fit, um, regulations, and the infrastructure would have to support that building for it to be built. Uh, if it doesn't have water, isn't enough water, they won't get permitted. If it doesn't have, the sewer doesn't have the capacity either, whoever's building that would have to build out the sewer to met have capacity, or it wouldn't be built. You're not gonna be just having these buildings plopped everywhere. These buildings aren't built every day. Uh, the idea is to try to, um, be proactive, try to attract some of these businesses that desire taller buildings such as pharmaceutical or biotech, try to compete with the towns that do allow taller buildings such as Westboro, Northboro, Sutton, Shrewsbury, Charlton, they all allow taller buildings. So, I, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Worcester's only have one building that's taller than eight stories built in the past 20 years, so they're not, they're not all that common. I can envision, um, you're gonna have hundreds of tall buildings coming to Auburn in the next couple of years.
Are we ready for the vote?
Yeah, Russell Tyllston, Precinct 2, um, my concern is, okay, uh, Joe Developer comes in and he's gonna build a big office building, biotech plant, lab, whatever, which is gonna employ lots of people. So, now the soil line, the water line that's going on there might not be adequate enough to supply this big new building. Is it gonna be his dime that pays to upgrade everything? Or is the town of Auburn gonna have to throw in some tax dollars to help it out?
Normally, the developer would have to do any upgrades. Uh, if they don't, if there's not enough sewer, or they need a pump station, the developer normally builds that, it's not something the town is going to readily do. It's not fair for the taxpayers to be doing something like that. I can defer to, um, DPW if they wanna try to answer that with some more specifics, but that's not the, the norm for, for, um, the town to pay for building an infrastructure just to support a single building.
Mrs. Dougherty?
Linda Dougherty, Precinct 3, I've been in Auburn for 15 years, 50 years, and I've seen the great building and how Auburn has grown. I currently can get anything I want in Auburn from my dog seeing the vet to having my hair done, to having my nails done, to having Chinese food, McDonald's, pizza, coffee, getting my car registered if I have AAA and I can go down to the, to the Heritage Mall. I think we have everything we need for the residents of our town. I personally think we should keep the small, the town small. I don't wanna live in, if I wanted to live in Worcester or a big city, I would live in a big city. But I think we have a lot here right now, and I think the project that Julie's done with Jury Square is quaint, it's New England. It's not a big, a big building where the fire department currently is, or a big building where the Auburn Mall is. What do we need that for? Our traffic is already bad. Why do we want more traffic in town? What advantage is this gonna be to us as citizens of this town? And what are we gonna leave our kids if we have, live in a big city? Do we really wanna leave that for our kids? I don't know if I feel this small group of people should be voting for this. Is this something that could go before the town electorate? So they can all vote on it? So we can see how everybody feels about making these, these changes? Because this isn't a little change, this is a big change. And I just don't know if we here should be the ones that vote on it. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I can try to respond to a couple of our, our questions if you like. Mr. Bow, to the moderator, if we can continue. Jury Square, the height in the Jury Square Village District remain 35 feet. Um, there's a separate district just for Jury Square, so the tall buildings wouldn't be in that district. Also, um, we didn't just come up with the idea of having tall buildings on our own. Uh, we've received a lot of input from, um, planning projects over the years, specifically the master plan, who receives a lot of input, a lot of people do wanna see it come into town. We had over six, almost 600 respondents on that survey. There are other, other planning projects, open space plan, um, economic development plan, many committee meetings, zoning diagnostic. We heard from a lot of people that they do want to attract some different types of business. That's kind of the direction we, we went with presenting these proposals.
Mr. Bowen?
Greg Bowing, Precinct 4, Auburn has a representative town meeting, which means these citizens elect representatives to come to town meeting in order to do the business for the town. Um, I represent roughly 3,000 people based on, uh, being a member of the district. I talk to those people. It's my responsibility as a town meeting member to vote on these types of decisions. So I'm a little bit taken back when the suggestion is, is this is not the appropriate forum to discuss a zoning bylaw. Right? This is our responsibility, and if you don't like it, vote against it. If, like me, you think that this is a net benefit for the town because it's gonna increase the value of parcels that may be sitting right now with a bunch of trees chopped down, right, or maybe I don't have to drive an hour to get to my job because there's an office building in town, then vote for it. But to sit here and say it's not our responsibility is just kind of, for me, a dereliction of why we were elected in the first place. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Leval, Precinct 2, I'm just curious if there have been any instances in the past where a business has wanted to come into Auburn, but this specific height requirements that have been in place has prevented them from coming here and has pushed them to another surrounding town.
Sure, I can, I can try to answer that. Uh, it's kind of a difficult question to specifically answer if we, if they look at the height requirements and we don't know that they're looking to cut the town, they don't necessarily call us. I do know at least one instance where an anaerobic digester was looking to come into town. Few people that don't know that's a electric generating facility that uses food waste to generate electricity. They were asking me about some of the requirements. Um, so I, I can't say yes for sure, but most likely there has been instances where developers decided to go somewhere else because of the height limitations.
Mr. Cooper?
Alan Cooper, Precinct 2. I'm in favor of defeating this, um, terms of 80 feet high, could be as much as eight stories. Something that 70 feet is considered high-rise. I don't think Auburn really wants a lot of high-rise buildings in town. We wanna stay at town. Like someone said, uh, if we wanted to live in the city, we would move to Worcester.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shannon Richards. I'm the economic development coordinator here in town as well as a town meeting member. Um, so I just wanted to mention a few things follow up on that question. There has been businesses that have wanted to move town that have expressed that their usage of their business, like biotech, for example, they typically don't look any minimum, any less than 60 feet, um, for their office space. And as you know, that brings high-paying jobs, um, to town. Currently in town, we don't have too many options of high-wage jobs such as biotech, higher office space, we're in desperate need of those areas. And we have had feedback from residents and the business community that that is something that's needed in town. Typically, actually with the infrastructure, um, typically when there's new builds, infrastructure's actually improved at that time. More green spaces incorporated with more current designs. So you'd have to be, actually be saving some green space, whereas now, if you built out wide, you're utilizing more green space. There's not as much for stormwater regulations. It's actually more difficult to put out fires. Um, it's actually safer because at 70 feet, more fire regulations, um, come into place. So there's multiple reasons why we're looking for this, um, increase, and we have had a desire from businesses. We all know Auburn's desirable, the location is wonderful, but we can't only rely on our location, we have to also remain competitive, so I just wanted to add that as well.
Jason Cooper, Precinct 3, Shannon said it all. I was trying to say if we wanna be competitive, it doesn't have to be residential, it could be industrial. A lot of these bio-farmer-type high-paying job, uh, uh, projects are typically, uh, industrial-zoned. They need certain height requirements for the mechanicals and all that. So it doesn't have to be zoned for residential, it could be zoned for industrial regions or commercial regions that will then benefit the town, uh, say Route 20 corridor and such where there's, you know, not as much residential, it's more commercial and industrial.
Thank you, anybody else?
Tom Kuz, Precinct 4, um, first a comment, I will, in regards to deference to abutters to those properties, I would ask you how well that worked out for the people who live near the Central One building that just went up. I received, remember, there's a lot of, um, opposition from the neighborhood against that building, yet it still persists. I do have one question, though, what would prevent, um, say, an existing business? Let's say La Keeta downtown, not to pick on them specifically. Let's say they want to bulldoze their existing property, build it to the max height, still on the same footprint, but still be within the setbacks and whatnot, they would be permitted to do that?
Uh, they would have to go through the planning board for site plan approval, um, where abutters would be notified. where abutters would be notified, we can get their, their feedback. And depending on the height of the building, if it's more than 80 feet, it would trigger that special permit with the zoning board of appeals. So they have to meet separate criteria from that separate board. And again, abutters will be notified separately of that separate meeting. So they would be critiqued thoroughly. They'd have to meet stormwater, parking, all the infrastructure requirements. Traffic most likely would be taken into account. A lot of these developments, the bigger ones, require traffic studies. So there would be a heavy scrutiny. They wouldn't be able to just build it just because they're keeping the same footprint. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just to remind you, this is a majority vote now. Light is on, please vote. Light is out. We'll wait for the results. Forty-three in favor, forty-eight against. It's only a majority vote, yes. Okay, one more. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, move to dissolve.
Mr. Baker, move to dissolve, there is a second. All of them favor? Thank you.